9:30. So I will, I think, call.
Close enough.
Yeah. I don't have my computer with me today, so I can check my phone. And it's 9:30. Okay. I will call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Michael Roush, welcome. Use of flash photography during select board meetings is prohibited. Our first item is to conduct, discuss, and consider applicant interviews for retail marijuana host community agreements, adult-use marijuana retail establishment. First is 9:30 a.m., NLM Inc., DBA Cape Cod Dispensary, 304 Main Street, Bourne, adult-use marijuana establishment. Is there someone here from M- N- M- NLM?
Oh, no.
Okay. You can come to the podium and introduce yourself. We are on Bourne TV. In order for anyone who's going to speak to be heard on their recording, they have to go to the podium to speak. So other people, if you're going to have other people speak. So you have a half hour to introduce yourself and to make your presentation, which will be followed by questions from the board. So, welcome. You can introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Nicole McCarthy, and I am the president of NLM Incorporated, doing business as Cape Cod Dispensary. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised here in Bourne. I graduated from Bourne High School in 2001. My husband Steve and I live in Pocasset with our twins Haley and Ryan, who are both freshmen in college. Over the last 15 years, we have owned and operated four edible arrangement stores, and we have one store remaining in Sandwich that is currently under agreement to be sold in the next 60 days. About a year ago, Steve and I started discussing what our plan might be once our kids left for college, and we had sold our last franchise store. And we both agreed that we would love to open a local business here in our hometown. But we didn't want to open just anything. We wanted to open something new and different that both Bourne residents and tourists could both benefit from. So when the opportunity to apply for the HCA presented itself, we knew right away it was something we wanted to learn more about and eventually pursue. I truly believe this industry is evolving, and I love the idea of owning a business that promotes health and wellness. And for me personally, I have seen the benefits of cannabis use. My memey at 80 years old started taking CBD gummies towards the end, the last few years of her life. I have two other relatives that have used cannabis for pain management during cancer treatments, and one other family member that uses CBD for arthritis and insomnia. With us today is our team made up of family and advisors that would be with us every step of the way, supporting and guiding us so that Cape Cod Dispensary would be a successful, well-respected business here in town. We truly believe that our business would be an asset in Bourne, and we are excited for the opportunity to present our proposal to you today. So our mission is to provide the town of Bourne with a locally-owned and operated first-class retail marijuana establishment, meeting all local and state requirements, provide jobs for local, diverse, and qualified residents, and give back to the community on an ongoing basis. Thank you. And then I'm going to have my husband provide additional business background information and the roles of each of our team members.
Steve McCarthy, I live in Pocasset also with Nicole. So that is our team up there. I'm one of the members of the team to help support Nicole in this venture. Just to give the business background, because I know that's a requirement. I moved to Bourne in '74, graduated from Bourne High School, opened a Dunkin' Donuts right down the street at 270 Main Street in 1987, and then we went on to open 21 additional Dunkins on the Upper Cape Bourne Sandwich in Bostable. In the middle of that, we also purchased the Greg Abel's Market in '92, which had been closed for a number of years, and reopened that and remodeled it. Greg Abel's then had Grocery, Full Licker, Deli, Butcher, Produce, et cetera, so we had that for 16 years. And then after that, Nicole and I purchased our first edible arrangement store in Plymouth, Mass, added two more locations, and then sold Plymouth. And during COVID, we closed Mashpee and Yarmouth and just held on to Sandwich, so that's where we are today. So it's about 35 years of owning small businesses in the area, and that's sort of where I would help with the operations administration and the property management. So that's the operation side that we would bring. And so the real expertise in the cannabis industry comes from Jeff and Steve Perkins, who have been in the business since 2017. They are growers and also retailers, so they've been in the space for quite a while. And we wouldn't have come here if we didn't have that component. You know, we don't know everything the first day you're in, so you need to have a team that knows what they're doing. We also have Shawna Fitzgerald, who's been in the business for a number of years in all different aspects of it. So that's how we're approaching this as a team. So, you know, we think we have it covered, and then the funding comes from, and that's how this all came together. My cousin Tom and his wife Barbara, you know, the funding component, and that's how we all met each other, because Tom had been in different ventures with the Perkins Brothers, and it just came together all at the same time that Bourne approved the retail marijuana, et cetera, and it just seemed to work. So that's how we get here today. We have also just added, for the security side, we've retained the retired police chief, Dennis Woodside, to help us make sure that we meet all the requirements, the local police and the state requirements, et cetera. So he will be part of the team also. So I think between the business end of it, Nicole and I will be the operations, and then the cannabis side would be the Perkins and Shawna Fitzgerald, and then the security side would be ex- retired police chief Dennis Woodside. There are extensive bios in the packages with all of it, but I don't want to just read off of that. But it was in the original submission, so I think it's in there, where we all come from and what we've done, and trying to meet all the qualifications that you would be looking And I think at this point, Jesse Moberg is our engineer and also going to speak to some of the other points in the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. So I did bring a little locust map for you.
Did you just introduce Jesse?
Yes, yes, I will. Here. He's over here. All right. So my name is Jesse Moberg, and I'm here to help introduce you to Cape Cod Dispensary team and give you a little bit more background and details about their proposed business and location at 304 Main Street in Bourne. My quick bio is that I'm a licensed and registered architect in good standing in Massachusetts and six other states. I've also been in the cannabis sector for over 10 years, and I've been legally qualified as a cannabis design and regulatory expert by the states of New York and New Jersey. I began my work in cannabis in 2013 while I was working as an architect in Falmouth, Mass. My prior experience was primarily in public work. I did fire stations, police stations, town halls, Barnstable County Correctional Facility, and other similar projects. My firm in the Cape was involved in the design and application for three of the first five medical applicants in the state of Massachusetts, which predates the Cannabis Control Commission, our current regulatory board. At that point, it was run by the Department of Health. I spent about five years working on both cannabis projects and more traditional projects before I was recruited to my current company in 2018 to run their cannabis studio. Our team has designed approximately 4 million square feet of cannabis facilities, including 59 dispensaries and 16 cultivation operations that are still fully functional today. Beyond that, that are currently open, we've done over 100 designs for permit approvals such as this one, HCA special permit site plan reviews, as well as the build out of multiple locations that have been purchased and in some cases closed by multi-store or multi-state operators. I've worked exclusively on cannabis projects for the past six years and one of the most experienced architects and regulatory advisors in cannabis in New England. I've been around since the rules for cannabis were written in Massachusetts. I've contributed details to the CCC regulations that they use statewide, and I know how the regulations have evolved over time based on operations and security considerations. So my extensive experience in this sector make me uniquely qualified to design an attractive and highly functional facility in the Bourne gateway to downtown and downtown district that meets all operational needs of the business, all the regulatory requirements from the state of Massachusetts and the Cannabis Control Commission and the town of Bourne, and the distinctive security needs of this type of facility while also providing a great customer experience. Cape Cod Dispensary is proposing a new adult-use retail facility located at 304 Main Street in Bourne. Attaining the host community agreement with the town of Bourne is the first of many steps to gain local, community, and CCC approvals. As you heard earlier, Nikki and Steve are Bourne locals, Bourne and raised, and looking to establish a family business with longevity in this community. This group is self-funded, meaning there's no reliance on outside funding or investment for construction or startup costs. This group is entirely focused on Bourne. This is their first and only location, and there are no plans at this time to expand outside of Bourne. Finally, this group will adhere to every applicable cannabis regulation, including extensive background checks with the Cannabis Control Commission. So cannabis in Massachusetts has evolved quite a lot, understatement of the century here. So medical marijuana was legalized in Massachusetts in 2012, with over 63% of Massachusetts voters casting their ballot in favor of Chapter 369, Acts of 2012, essentially legalized medical use with a registered medical card. Adult use, or sometimes referred to as recreational cannabis, was approved by voters in Massachusetts in 2016 with over 53% of the vote in favor of Question 4. There were some tweaks that happened in the state legislature after that, so the Acts of 2017, the following fall, is what officially codified legal cannabis as part of Massachusetts state law. Along with a lot of other municipalities in the state, Bourne opted out as their prerogative to do so. So they initially opted out, so there are no current active dispensaries in Bourne, as you know. Massachusetts cannabis licenses is divided into two tracks, essentially. You have medical use and you have recreational use. All cannabis facilities, regardless of their license type, their location, their size, or their age, how long they've been in business, are subject to strict comprehensive state regulations and inspections by commission agents. CCC is not only responsible for writing the regulations but enforcing them as well under Mass general law. For example, a portion of 935 CMR 501, which is the regulatory code language for medical use, medical facilities have to have something called vertical integration, which means you cannot sell medical products unless you also grow it yourself and/or manufacture it yourself. And for that reason, these guys are not looking to open a medical facility at this time. If the regulations change in the future, they would be open to it. The next couple of slides are just details about those sections of Mass general law if you want to reference back to them. In November 2023, voters in Bourne approved the Marijuana Overlay District zoning bylaw, which established the location and zoning restrictions for cannabis dispensaries, and also repealed that general town bylaw that prohibited marijuana sales. Cape Cod Cannabis seeks to operate a facility in Bourne that is in full compliance with state law and local regulations. Our goal is to be a positive asset to this community, not to be a nuisance or a detriment. As you can see from the previous slides, Massachusetts general law and the Bourne zoning bylaw for cannabis dictate the quantity of retailers as well as their location. We fully understand that the host community agreement is just step one of this process. We must also seek local approvals such as site plan or special permit, obtain all required approvals and licensing with the CCC, and obtain building permits from the local jurisdiction for our site development. We are committed to working with the town of Bourne, including the local police department, local fire department, building department, and all other departments within town government with legitimate concerns or questions about our operation. As part of these approvals and being allowed to operate within the town of Bourne, Bourne will receive a 3% local tax on all retail sales in addition to their property taxes. Skip that. Our site is in full compliance with the local zoning bylaw and planning board requirements. We are not within 500 feet of a public school. We have completed a traffic study, the contents of which you have, but the synopsis of that is there will be no significant traffic impact from operating on our site. All plans for construction will be completed by licensed architects and engineers and will be in full compliance with all applicable codes and regulations, including accessibility. We will present and seek approval of our detailed security plans with the local police department and police chief during that special permit process, should we be awarded an HCA. As materials presented during public meetings enter the public domain, it's recommended that we discuss the detailed security plan with the police department individually and with you guys individually, so that it doesn't enter that public domain. Our site has ample dedicated parking for our facility. The building has been designed, which we'll show you some slides later, but rendering is shown here. The building has been designed to comply with the Bourne Downtown Architectural Design Standards and Guidelines document available on your website. In the next stage of development, we'll ensure that the final design is appropriate for the area, consistent with adjacent structures and landscaping, and well-integrated into the neighborhood. All right. So I have a, just a little locust map to show you where it is in relation to Rotary and to Route 25.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is later in the slides as well. Okay. So our site is located at 304 Main Street. It's just off the Bourne Rotary North and within the Marijuana Overlay District. This building is a former restaurant. It's approximately 2,700 square feet and is currently vacant. A full renovation of the existing building is proposed, but we do not plan to knock it down and rebuild or make large structural changes. This location was selected due to its visibility and appropriateness for retail. Many dispensaries are relegated to industrial zones or off the beaten track, and they frankly just don't perform as well as those in central commercial areas. We not only want to open a retail store here, but open a lasting family business, and customer traffic is how we do that. A busy store is much more likely to succeed than a store that is hard to find or hard to access, and having this store operate for years to come is in the best interest for both the Cape Cod Dispensary team and the town of Bourne. Due to its location, traffic in this area fluctuates massively during the seasons, the switch of seasons. This works to our benefit in terms of traffic flow, because the roads are already set up to handle high volume and fluctuating traffic between seasons. Our traffic study from Vanas and Associates illustrates that our operations won't have any significant impact on traffic. What this report does not say, however, is that our traffic will be steady and year-round, meaning customers who make the trip to our store, especially in the off-season, will also be drawn into downtown and more likely to patronize other businesses in the area. I'm going to walk you through this floor plan. So probably spend the most time on this slide, because I'm going to give you a little bit of details about what happens in each area and what the security components are. So there is a floor plan in your packet if you'd like to look at that, and I'm also going to flip this around so it's up on the board. Okay. The floor plan is divided into two distinct sections, mostly based on access and security. The public areas, or what I like to call front of house, account for approximately 950 square feet and are accessed through a central entry and exit door that is facing our parking lot, so on the opposite side of the building from the Rotary. The staff-only or the back-of-house spaces account for approximately 1,700 square feet and create a dedicated access for staff and product delivery that is away from the main building entry. All customers will access the dispensary through the front door, which is in the same location as one of the existing front doors. Access is via sidewalk that connects directly to the parking lot. All customers will be stopped at reception for an ID check and will not be allowed into the sales area unless they present a valid ID. All customers must be at least 21 years of age with a valid, government-issued ID. That will be verified for not only age but legitimacy using an ID scanner. Once customers granted access into the retail area via door buzzer or remote release from the reception area, they will have the opportunity to browse product selections by tablet or by menu. They can look at packaging on the sales floor and can speak with employees who are going to be very well-versed in cannabis products and their uses. By CCC regulations, no cannabis products are allowed to be handled by customers prior to purchase, and any cannabis products that are displayed on the sales floor have to be in locking cases, and they must be moved back to the vault secure storage space at the end of every business day. Once a customer has decided on a purchase, they may order via tablet on the sales floor for pickup at the sales counter, or they can proceed to a point of sale and order with a budtender, with a person. Regardless of how an order is placed, a secondary ID check happens at the point of sale prior to the transaction going through. Day stock inventory will be stored behind the point of sale in casework or shelving. All product that's stored there also has to be moved back to the vault at the end of every business day, but that allows the budtenders to fulfill the orders right there at the point of sale. Once an order's been filled, transaction's complete, customer's been handed a sealed bag with their product, they are directed straight back out of the building through a dedicated exit door at that central entry and exit vestibule. Dispensaries are not a place for people to hang out. Nobody will be loitering on this property. No consumption of any kind is allowed on the property or in any public place in Massachusetts. Dispensaries are by code a quick transaction business, which is similar to a takeout-only restaurant. The back-of-house spaces will be divided from all public areas using access controls and security devices, usually in the form of door hardware. All staff members will have a key card that allows them access to specific areas of the building based on their position and management level. For example, only managers will have access to secure storage areas, but all employees will have access to the break room. Staff will enter through a side door directly into the staff break room. Within this break room are lockers for employees to store their personal belongings during their shift. There'll be a large office for the general manager and shift managers. There's a dedicated bathroom for staff in the back of house. There's a large, I'm sorry, an order fulfillment area, which is really a staging area for orders that have been filled or ordered online, getting ready for pickup. It's also an area for restocking, those casework in the back of house. Prep it, wait for your line to go away, and then you can securely stock. Lastly, there is a large secure storage area, which is usually referred to as a vault in this case, but it doesn't meet the true definition. This is a two-hour rated firewall with an embedded layer of steel security mesh. This is an industry standard in Massachusetts for a wall type for a vault and has been accepted by the CCC since 2016. By CCC regulation, you also have a facility security system, which is housed in a room of similar construction. All the security system by CCC regs has to be on full battery and/or generator backup, so there is no downtime if there's a power outage. Product delivery will happen through the same side door as the staff entry. Delivery is done by small, discreet vehicles. It's typically Ford Transit or the smaller of the Sprinter vans, just looks like a regular work van. Product delivery does not occur in a box truck, tractor-trailer, or any kind of armored vehicle. You will not see those going in or out of our site. Delivery vehicles fit into a standard parking space. Delivery operations are strictly regulated by the CCC as a different license type, and deliveries are typically random, both in day and time for added security, making that schedule unpredictable. Lastly, on this slide, odor. So odor is always a topic of concern when it comes to cannabis facilities. This facility will not be cultivating, manufacturing, extracting, or bulk packaging. Most products are going to arrive onsite in airtight or otherwise sealed containers for product freshness and quality control. Many products naturally have no odor, such as beverages, or capsules, or topicals. Any odor that occurs within the building is ambient odor from a packaged product. So it's very minimal. You have to put your nose right up to it to smell it, so they don't smell on the interior generally. Despite all of that, though, we will make sure that the building envelope and the HVAC system are designed such that no odor is leaving the building, even if you do get ambient odor within the envelope. Building elevations are pretty simple in this case. So the proposed changes to the exterior are really about giving this building a facelift without making huge structural changes. The intent is to beautify the existing site, not rebuild it from the ground up. The existing building is structurally sound, and with a little work could provide a ton of positive improvement to the area. The intent is to re-clad or re-shingle the exterior of the building as needed using cedar shingles or clapboard siding in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The existing shingle roof will need to be replaced due to age, and we propose adding a little bit of Cape Cod flair above the door on the roof lines, extend the eve a little bit, add that, add some decorative brackets, as you can see in the, well, I took it down, but we'll put it back up in a minute. Currently, there's two main entry doors to this facility. One faces the Rotary and one faces our parking lot. The glass entry on the Rotary would be replaced with fixed glass as opposed to a door, and we would use that as an opportunity for signage facing the Rotary. The entrance will be on the parking lot side, which is kind of off the side road. It's not facing the Rotary, so all traffic is kind of running behind our building. It's not visible from the public way. Branded signage will be installed on the exterior walls. All building-mounted signage will be in full compliance with the Bourne bylaws, as well as the Bourne Downtown Architectural Guidelines. It's just a continuation of the other slide.
We have about five minutes left, three or five minutes left.
Okay. Let's do it. Okay. Preliminary site plan, this was really just to show you that we're not changing the way that the site currently operates. that the site currently operates. This is the exact configuration that was used by the restaurant, with the exception of taking out a large cooler that's currently on the side of the building. The only thing that's not shown here is cannabis trash receptacle, so you need a locking receptacle, either a dumpster or a lockable trash can by CCC regulations. I will just say that you cannot actually throw any cannabis trash in that trash can, even if you had it. That has to be securely stored within the building, and the products return to their dispensary, I'm sorry, their manufacturing of origin for destruction. Exterior renderings, again, just pretty pictures of what we've already talked about. So adding some landscaping to the oyster shell courtyard that was used for outdoor dining before, re-shingling and putting on a new roof. Interiors are in very early stages, but the idea here is to embrace the classy nautical theme and with a nod to sea glass and the Bourne Bridge and the company logo. Materials reflect that, and we'll get into those in more detail in special permit. We're proposing hours from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We are proposing to hire full-time, 12 full-time employees, including the breakdown on the chart on the slide. Cape Cod dispensary is committed to hiring local and prioritizing Bourne residents, not only in operations but also in construction. In addition to the full-time staff, the McCarthys will lean on their local ties to bring in tradesmen for the build-out and maintenance of the facility. They've done this on other businesses, and they're committed to doing it here as well. This slide is just to give you a snapshot of kind of average customers per hour and how customer counts and average money spent on a single transaction changes between peak and off-season. Basket assortment is to tell you about the products that they plan to offer. If you have detailed questions about this, we do have operations here to answer them for you. Most of these we've, we'll have already gone over in the floor plan. So this is just talking about, you have to be 21, you get your ID checked at least twice in the facility. Massachusetts has some of the strictest testing regulations in the country still, with 38 states with legal cannabis. We are still one of the hardest to get through testing. So the products are very regularly inspected and tested as part of CCC. All packaging is child-resistant, tamper-proof, and marked with warning labels. This includes every individual gummy. It's not just the package, it's the product itself. Zoning, we comply with all of your current zoning. We have ample parking, and we are not within a buffer zone. This slide is similar to the map I handed out to you, it's just to give you context of where we are. So we're located kind of at the intersection of Route 25, the Bourne Bridge, the off-ramp to the Bourne Rotary, the Bourne Bridge Approach, and the Main Street. So we are ideally situated because we're visible from the rotary, but we're set back from the road, and we have our own dedicated parking lot. It allows traffic, just naturally, they have to take that exit towards downtown to get to our site, so it also is driving traffic further into your downtown area. There's a lot of steps ahead in this process, and we're excited to go through them with you. The idea here is that we submitted the materials for the HCA. We'll have a detailed security plan, emergency response plan, and operations plan that's distributed to all of you and all town departments as part of the special permit application should we receive an HCA. We will hold community outreach meetings to comply with CCC requirements, and also just get valuable feedback from the community, so we can hear and address their concerns. We'll work to ensure that all questions are answered and all concerns are addressed prior to moving ahead with any final designs. Cape Cod dispensary wants to be a good neighbor. The owners and operators are Bourne residents, they're dedicated to hiring local. Bourne is going to receive tax benefits as part of this project. We will fit into the neighborhood. The intent is not to stand out here, it's to fit into the character of what's already existing, and to really become part of the community. In addition to being a good neighbor and a good business, we're also dedicated to volunteering and community engagement in whatever form that may take. There are a few examples on these slides, and we can talk about them in more detail if you have questions on them. The last section of this is, is security, and there's a lot of information in there. I'm happy to answer detailed questions. The gist of it is, we are going to comply and exceed in every area possible what the CCC regulations require of us. We have the former police chief on board, who's going to help us through this process for Bourne-specific concerns. We will also be working with the local jurisdiction, with the local police chief, with the local fire chief, to make sure that they're comfortable with our final arrangement, our final design, and hopefully give us an endorsement on those plans when we get into the special permit process. We already talked a little bit about nuisance. The other component of this is, is there's no consumption onsite. There's no consumption allowed anywhere by Mass. General Law in public spaces. Any, any consumption that does happen onsite, it may happen, but the, the dispensary is committed to following law there, so we will have IDs and license plates, and those people would be reported directly to local PD. All right. Again, we have a lot of information here. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. We have a full team to address any operational concerns, any cannabis concerns, any regulatory concerns, and product concerns as well. So we just want to thank you, first of all, for having us here and for listening to our presentation. We also do invite anybody who would like to visit an operational facility currently. We have that ability with our cannabis advisors here on the team. So if you'd like to just visit one and see how it works from the customer and from the employee perspective, just let us know, and we can set that up.
Ready for questions from the board?
Yes. Do you have any legal control of the property at 304 Main Street? Could I, I'm reading a letter of intent with no signature page to it, but do you have it, have?
Oh, yes. No, it's, it's.
There is an agreement.
We have the letter of interest, I think I'm looking at it online here.
Yeah, no, no, there's definitely signed documents with the property owner that we control it until further notice. I'm pretty sure it's in, in that pack.
Yeah, there is, there is a signed document.
The signature of the property owner is not great, but it's, it's on there.
Yeah, it's Benny and, yeah, Benny too.
There's an affidavit here, but I don't see.
No, it's definitely under control.
Huh? What page is that?
It's in the tab marked "location."
I'll go back and look on here, because they downloaded all this for us online, that's what I'm going off of. I've got the books, it gets too much to carry around.
Right, right. No, it is definitely under control.
You did have the biggest book.
Very nice, very, very nice, thick, quality pages.
Very thorough. I use it this morning at the gym.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I mean, I had like 10 questions, but a lot of them were answered in the presentation. So I guess I'll just go with one of the questions that maybe I didn't hear, if that's.
Yeah, we'll kind of do, like, do one each, and then go through again if other.
Yeah, that would be great, and I mean, I think a lot of it, I think what was great was, you know, the town administrator and her, her office did such an amazing job having everything in there that we might need to ask. So I think a lot of the questions I had were already answered in your presentations, because you did them so wonderfully. I think one of the questions, it's something I just don't know, and I wondered this, so I, I visited, I probably visited about 10 different facilities over the last six months or so since we've been doing this work, just to sort of see how they did, how they were done differently. Some of them are real, you know, fancy inside, some of them are, you know, very basic, and, you know, you go in one door, out the other. And I was just curious, I know that, you know, obviously things expire, and products may, you know, sometimes they may be mold or things that come off, or something you might find after. So how do they handle the disposal of the cannabis waste that you may have that out of code, out of date, or has to be disposed in any way? That was just sort of one of the questions I didn't have an answer for, so if somebody could, you could maybe talk to me a little bit about that.
Steve Perkins, one of the team's advisors. This is a little different because it's a retail-only establishment. What Jesse mentioned was keeping it in a separate quarantine container within the vault, and then at some point on our SOP schedule, every so often, we do a transfer back to the provider that purchased it from us. A lot of times, we want them to see that anyway. If it's something defective, we want our suppliers to know they may have a problem with their product.
Sure, sure. Okay, yeah, thank you. That was just a question, I was curious about where it went, you know, disposal-wise, back to the producer or otherwise? Thank you.
Hi, I have a question for Nicole. Hi. Welcome. You mentioned in the application process that you've been doing some training at AMP.
We have.
So how long have you been doing that training? And also, like, what makes, you know, in that experience, how are you going to separate yourself apart from some of the competitors?
Yeah, so.
Based on that experience?
My husband and I have been there probably over the last few weeks. We've been shadowing the manager there, and, what was the other part of that? I'm sorry.
Just sit, based on those experiences, like, how would you separate yourself apart from, you know, it's a competitive market?
Right. Well, I think the biggest thing is, you know, just the way we present ourselves, like, for me, you know, customer service is a big part of it, you know, just the staff that's trained in there and such, and, you know, I think just Brockton might be a little different, I think, from what we see, you know, our, you know, Cape Cod dispensary, just, you know, lighter, brighter, more inviting type of atmosphere, you know, from, from what we had kind of, you know, had just been in there. Yeah. Sorry.
Do you have a question, Jean?
Yeah, the delivery. I see the business hours, the delivery hours are random, I can understand that. The, when is that going to take place? When the store is open throughout those hours, or is there a set time, or?
It varies based on the delivery operator. Oftentimes, that'll be planned to be within business hours, but because we have a separate delivery door that's actually shielded visually from the main entry door, it's very unlikely that customers are going to be sitting there watching it be delivered. The randomization, again, is because of security. It's very discreet. I've been in dispensaries, either working or, you know, just, I do the same thing, I kind of go sneak on everybody's dispensaries, just see what everybody's doing. But you don't even really notice when it's going through the back door. We do have an advantage here where we have a secondary door. A lot of dispensaries operate their entire lifespan where deliveries are coming in and out of the same front door as customers at the same time as customers, and it's just, it's usually delivered in a little cart or in rubber-made buckets that are kind of strapped to a dolly. It's less obtrusive than if you're getting a keg delivery at a bar, or if you're getting a, you know, a paper goods delivery at an office building. It's, it's pretty discreet, and it's pretty quick.
And as far as the training, I guess I had a question about training employees. So there's a, is there a standard consultants or a firm, or how, how is that handled?
Hi, Shawna Fitzgerald. I've been in the space for about five years. I've managed two different dispensaries as a GM. Currently, I run a company that is on the wholesale side. So the training of the budtenders is really important, and that really is what's going to set them apart. The budtenders are what makes it happen, your, the knowledge of the budtenders. There's a lot of wonderful resources out there. One of them is green flower that we like to use. It has everything from how to plant, how to, you know, talk to the customers, what customers need, how to ask open-ended questions. It's very much a consultative type of experience is what, you know, that we'll be offering for them, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll be doing the training?
I'm sorry?
You're doing the training?
Yes. I'll be, I'm, I'm part of that, of the training of not only run, helping run the dispensary, but also the budtender education, the inventory back of house too.
Before you leave, I, I have a little bit of a question on your background. So looking at your resume, you, you had a lot of job changes where you'd be at a place for six months, and then you move on to another place. Can you talk a little bit about that?
That, actually, just to kind of start from the beginning, I was in the alcohol space for about 35 years, and then always got, got into the cannabis space by any way I could, is what I really wanted to do. So my first position was a, basically, call center associate. Wasn't my skill set, so kept looking, and it's very typical in this industry when you see that kind of jumping around, because everybody is, you know, coming on, online, and just the space there, it, it really is, it does look like you jump around a lot, but it's really not. Like, a year out of place is a lot. So my, my space, or being in the industry right now for about five years is, it's, it's really a lifetime. So even though it does appear that there's jumping around, it's very typical in the industry. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Do you have another, anyone else have a question? Another question?
Just real quick. My, my, you came up, because I think it might be for you, it's regarding the design. So I'm very familiar with the building. I, I live in that neighborhood, and I'm curious, will you have, I know not all, as again, each of the, the facilities that I've visited over the past six months are all different, and I know that some have a, where you enter one door and you depart out the other. Are you really going to use this for this facility? Where, I know that you said they'd enter the front door, is that the Main Street door? Are you considering the front door, the back door is?
Considering the front door, the back door.
Okay, so the front door is the rear door?
Yeah, the one facing our park.
Okay, and then will people go through and then retreat out the back, or how is that going to look?
No, so we, we actually tried that. We tried about three different variations of a floor plan with that kind of entry and exit. And we found that wayfinding is difficult for customers if you bring them to one door or the other, because you have to have a centralized ID check at that front entry. We didn't want to basically have somebody walk in and then have a hallway bisecting the building, so that people could come in and do an ID check. We don't intend to use that back door for a couple of reasons. One, it's a long way to get back to the parking lot, so we would still have to designate an exit door on that parking lot side for handicap parking access, has to be the closest to the building. And it's also just unnecessary for the building. It's about, like I said, a little over 900 square feet. It's relatively small. We did separate traffic, though, on the floor plan. So you walk in, you go straight to the right, sort of an open area for display. Beyond that, closer to the point of sale, you have an area for queuing, in case you do have a line backup. And it's, it's essentially circular. You walk in, you go right, immediate right, and then the whole traffic circulation kind of goes to the left in a, in a circular pattern. What that means to our benefit, which is why people do the separate entry and exit door, is that people entering and people exiting are not crossing traffic. So there's no way for somebody to kind of sneak in the exit door without an ID check or anything like that, which is kind of the risk of having a separate exit.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little, it's, size-wise, it didn't really make sense with the configuration of the building.
I was just curious. I think that's a good process myself, for a lot of reasons, but that's my personal opinion, so thank you. I was just curious if that was going to be used here in any way, or if there was plans to maybe use that. I know that this didn't really say that, but, all right, thanks. I'm Jake.
And Marie, do you have another question?
No. I, I just want to make a comment, though. I was particularly, there's, there was a portion of it that you connected with our LCP plan in your, in your documentation, and, you know, that LCP plan drives a lot of our decision-making, and you did a considerable amount of connecting your business with what, what we see as, as some of the driving force in our local conference.
Jean?
Yeah, I would agree with Emery, and I do appreciate the, being Bourne residents and the outreach back to the community and wanting to benefit town and retain your roots here with the business as well.
So I have a question. On, so you're, it's, this is not a medical facility because of the vertical integration, and I've come to understand that, along with some of the financial requirements for medical that, but do you intend to offer discount? But do you intend to offer discounts to people that do have a medical card, or discounts to people who have economic hardship?
Once again, Steve Perkins, you do see operators doing that, however, it's against the regulation. So anybody who comes up here and tells you, if anybody does, not saying anybody would, but there are operators in the state that try to lure medical customers away from medical licensed facilities by offering the twenty percent discount, and it's completely against state regulation. So we will not be doing that.
What about, what about, what's your marketing plan in terms of regular?
The mar-
Sales or sales days, or you can get this, just, you know, do you offer regular sales on things, or is it pretty?
So in a retail-only, adult-use establishment, the bylaws from the CCC prevent us from, or any operator, from sales or discounts, you have to be very careful on the language. So once in a while, there's new pricing on products, they usually follow basically the market price. But advertising, marketing, everything's very, very age-based. For instance, when you see a cannabis billboard, you need a traffic study that says a certain percentage of the traffic driving by that billboard is over the age of twenty-one. So you have to be very careful what you do to market and advertise the business.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I have a question on fire suppression. So I would, I would say that, like, going up in smoke would be like a concern.
Unintended.
So can you talk about fire suppression?
Yeah, so, I mean, this building is like any other retail store, so we follow the NFPA, we follow the state and international building codes as dictated by master general law. This building is not large enough to require a fire sprinkler system, but it will have a full fire alarm system with an addressable panel that we will coordinate with the fire department to make sure that they are able to dial directly into it. Again, it's, it's like any other retail store as regards to fire suppression, and all products and the security system will be stored in that fire-rated enclosure within the building.
I was wondering, there's no special regulations for this type of facility, that's interesting.
No, there's a brand-new NFPA section about cultivations, because they're much more high-hazard, but again, this is, it's no more, no heightened security like you'd see in a jewelry store, but it's really just a retail store with a secure storage area.
MJ?
Yes.
I did have one last question about security and the cameras.
Yeah.
And who is monitoring them, when, how often, what's the integration of?
So these guys can probably speak in, in a little bit more detail about how it works day-to-day, but generally speaking, there is a security director at every company that will be monitoring the security camera feeds. Employees and your general manager, there will be screens inside the facility with full camera, full cover, camera coverage, both inside and around the building and in the parking lot. The fire, I'm sorry, the police department will be offered an opportunity to basically tie directly into the cameras if they would like to. This is a benefit for them, because they can see that nothing's happening, or they can also use that for any incidents that may happen in adjacent buildings. Kind of fun fact about dispensaries is that they actually make their neighborhoods safer, generally speaking, there's some Harvard studies that state as much, but it's because you have an enhanced presence of security, you have enhanced design through SEPDED, which is described in there, but it's essentially crime prevention through environmental design. You build your building to prevent crime, just inherently by the way that it's, it's laid out. So all those components kind of fit together into the master security plan, and camera coverage is just one small component of that, but it's all, it's all tied together. Security system is also tied into the fire alarm system typically, so if the fire alarm went off, for example, their security director would get a notification saying, like, hey, your fire alarm's going off. So it makes it a lot easier for employees or management to respond to an incident on site, and also to tie in and bring in local authorities anytime it might be necessary to bring them to site as well.
I appreciate that, yeah, as I, I was on the planning board before when I started learning about all this, and I think having that extra set of eyes, it's odd bedfellows, but it's definitely a benefit, especially when you mentioned downtown district, you know?
Yeah, for sure, and, I mean, odd bedfellows, but they have the same goal at the end of the day, right? These guys want to run a safe and secure facility, the town wants to run a safe and secure facility, and I, I think their, their partnership in that respect, more so than, you know, maybe the fire department.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? I have another one.
Oh, Donna, I have one more.
Okay, you go first.
I, I don't know who this should be directed at, but as you know, you know, we're a seasonal community, and my concern is how, you know, the, the number of employees and retention of employees during those down times, and if there's, if there's a plan to kind of navigate that, you know, sustainable employment. And I don't know the industry with respect, like, you know, you said, you know, it, people hop, but.
Yeah, Steve McCarthy again, for CASAT, if, if, you know, we've, we've got a set number of staff, you know, perfect, perfect world. And the idea would be to, you don't want anybody leaving just because it slows down, you know, there'll be a minimum, we'll call power, that you need, and that, that is it. And we'll, we'll maintain that, because once you get a, a good employee, you don't want to let them go, so it's, it's just, you know, you, you hope the summer, you know, you do some business where you're able to carry.
Staff.
Extra payroll.
Oh, okay.
And, and that, that's how you do it.
Okay.
I'd like to, if I could address that, too.
Sure.
One of the things in, in the training program that we'll be doing is cross-training, it's actually very efficient, so not only would you be trained as a bud tender, but you could also be trained as an inventory person, and that's where it kind of helps with retaining, because that, that employee, depending on callouts and, you know, they can be moved. Okay, you were bud tender today, but tomorrow you're going to be in inventory, they, they can do security, so there's really not many, there's really nothing unless it's a G, you know, the GM, but there's not really any position in the dispensary that you couldn't train for, and that's why we cross-train.
Okay, my question is really a corporate structure question, so you, you all were pretty clear about the stock percentages that people had. But can you talk about the, sort of the, the roles and responsibilities and how the different owners are compensated? Is this S corp or is it a C corp, and is it going to be directly related to your stock, or is there going to be some other compensation?
Steve McCarthy again, for CASAT, yeah, it's a C corp, and the, I guess, before you can have compensation, you've got to have sales and see if there's anything left at the end, so. The, the distribution will be based on the percentage ownership, et cetera, and, you know, like I say, that may take a little while to determine. I can't give you numbers, but that's sort of, that's what, that's what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, do you want to do a little closing, or are you all set? I mean.
Yep, I, generally, I think just, thanks for holding the meeting, thanks for inviting us to participate and hearing us out. If there's any questions you have, we are all at your disposal, just get in touch and we'll give you whatever info you need. If you'd like to go and visit an active dispensary and see the back of house operations, reach out, and these guys here at the end will be happy to show you around and give you a little bit more background on how it works, how it actually functions day-to-day. So, thanks again, and on behalf of these guys, we appreciate your time.
So the board is interviewing applicants over today and tomorrow, this is our focus for this, these two days. At the end of the day tomorrow, we will determine the next steps. So we haven't decided yet exactly how we're going to go in this next step piece of it, but the administration will be contacting each of the applicants when the board has decided who will be, who will be talking to about HCAs. So, thank you very much for coming in and presenting to us.
Thank you.
I don't. No, I'm good. I don't know if we, if we want to talk about these, I don't know if you want to just make notes on your ratings, if you have any comments you want to share with the board. Or if you just want to make your own notes at this time.
I kind of have my notes and the thoughts.
I have my chicken scratch.
Maybe nine, ten, ten questions.
Yeah, until we determine next steps and the decision-making.
Right, so I find when you do interviews like this, that it's good to spend a couple minutes talking, just writing your own notes and doing your ratings, because if you don't, they start blending in together.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I think, we have a half an hour before the next one, I'm gonna make some notes and maybe think about my initial ratings on that, but.
Marlene, may I please have a criteria sheet?
They're over here.
There's a couple of extras. Oh, okay, good. I did use a pencil. I don't have, I don't have a ton, but there's a couple of extras. I'll take an extra one, sure, thank you.
I don't know if I gave you multiple.
You gave them all.
I had to dig up a pencil sharpener, that was exciting.
What?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we're not starting with you until like eleven, so. That's okay.
Yeah.
I see nap, I don't see anything.
Yeah, but it was notarized, so it's a, it's a legal document. Oh, 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 oh.
Yep, I didn't even save it right there, thank you.
This is Benny's.
Tony brings me a coffee.
And it outlines, like, cost and everything, lease agreement.
I actually binded that one together, I ended up doing it myself. I was like, I bet you Anne Marie did.
What, what did I do? Oh, I, you know what?
I had to bind it and put it in a flyer.
Yeah.
Did you?
I didn't bind it, but I.
Oh, the loose ones?
Not like a link, like one of these.
I put it in, I did.
The office, I have like this other type of binder.
It took me a little while, because I only have one of the, mine only holds a few sheets, the puncher, so. Oh, my goodness. It took me a little while, but I did it. I think I have, yeah, I have. No way to look at it, otherwise I couldn't, the papers were falling apart. Yes. Yeah. So I, I made the initiative to do it, I took the initiative. And they're still traveling. Yeah? Yeah. Wish it all be some luck.